All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. Officially, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's very odd to have my back to the audience, but I understand there's a reason for it. So, welcome to the, whatever this is, October 25th, City Council Work Session. And I think we're all relieved to know that the strike is over and that next week we'll be back to our regular quarters, although it's been kind of nice being in the library. So, thank you, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kristi Hammett. I'm the interim Assistant City Manager. I'm filling in for John Reese today. And our first item on the agenda is an update on the first year of the library levy. And I'll turn it over to Library Recreation and Cultural Services Director Renee Grooby.
Thank you. This is really a great thing to be able to come back and give you an update on what's been going on in the last, really, year and a half since the levy was passed. And we're really happy to have City Council meeting in this space because I heard a quote recently from Lady Bird Johnson that said, "Perhaps no place in the community is so totally democratic as the town library. The only entrance requirement is interest." And so, it just seems appropriate, you know, for City Council to be here. So, we're going to miss you, and we'll see you back in budget time, I guess. So, today, before we get started, I would like to thank our library staff because the single biggest asset we have in providing the services that are funded through the levy and the general fund in the community in general is our staff. And we have a number of our folks here, Nancy Horner, Marissa Kirk, Kristen Johnson, Chris Thorpe is somewhere here, Darcy Beal, and Margaret Alexander. All of them are leading our team on a daily basis, and they are really superb individuals. We also have our Vice Chair of the Library Advisory Board, Kelly Johnson, right here, behind you. The Library Advisory Board has been tasked with reviewing whether we're making progress on our promises to the community. They've been reviewing the progress every month for the last, since the levy was passed, and Kelly's here representing that group. And Julie Whitmore is back there as well. Okay. If I missed anyone, I just want to get that out of the way because we really can't do this without our community support. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margaret Alexander, who's our Facilities and Technology Manager for the library, and she's going to walk us through the progress that we've been making.
Thank you, Renee. Connie Bennett, our Library Services Director, apologizes for not being able to be here today. She really wanted to help share this information. So, I'd like to begin with a brief recap and reminder of the steps that led to the library levy. In the fall of 2014, the library embarked on a broad community engagement process. We asked community members for their vision of the library of the future. We asked, what changes did they want? What services did they want? Following that visioning work, the library director, Connie Bennett, made multiple presentations to City Council. You all decided to place a five-year local option levy on the ballot. It was ballot measure 20-235. The services included in the levy ballot measure are in direct response to the information we learned from community members during that visioning process. In November of 2015, voters passed the measure, approving a five-year local option levy that provides around $2.7 million annually, around $37 per tax statement. These levy funds support expanding specific library services, more access, more programs, and more materials and technology. Specific provisions were also to ensure accountability and transparency built into the levy. This report covers the time period of July 1st, 2016, when the first levy funds were received, through June 30th of 2017, the first year of the levy. I'd now like to go through each section of the levy with more detail. First, more hours and access. During the recession, as a cost-saving measure, we reduced hours at the two branches and at the downtown library. During those years, the downtown library was open 61 hours a week across seven days. Bethel and Sheldon were open only 26 hours across five days a week. Community members consistently and strongly asked for the hours to be increased. They wanted more open hours, more access. As a result, the levy promise is to add 22 hours per week at the two neighborhood branches. Bethel libraries now open 48 hours, Monday through Saturday, and Sheldon branches also open 48 hours, Monday through Saturday. Downtown libraries again open Sunday mornings. We now open every day of the week at 10:00 a.m. A major accomplishment was beginning all of these additional open hours as of July 1st, 2016. Though we'd not yet received the funding, we took extra efforts to begin the hiring and training process in the spring in order to offer those expanded hours right on July 1st. The public was really appreciative. Staff were instantly flooded with comments of gratitude, especially at the branches. Here are just a few. "I'm excited I can come here more often and read more. I'm going to be driving less because now I can visit the library on days when I'm going to be already in the area. Thank you. I'm so happy I'm doing a happy dance." There were over 1 million visits to the library. This is a 10% increase in visitors in the first year, a significant increase in access due to the levy funds. Expanded hours also increased access to the services, computers, programs, and, of course, the collection. One metric to measure this increased access is circulation, or the number of materials borrowed by cardholders for home use. Total library system circulation increased by 10% last year to over 2.5 million. For more specifics about the level of borrowing each location, while the downtown location stays essentially even, we see increases at both neighborhood branches. Bethel, 150,000; Sheldon, 200,000. The fastest-growing part of our collection is the borrowing of eBooks or downloading digital movies or audiobooks. This increased by nearly 30% to 180,000. The total number of library cardholders also increased over last year, which we believe is in correlation to the increased access. There are over 2,000 additional cardholders, bringing the total number to over 100,000 cardholders. In preparation for the expanded services, we intentionally planned to also increase the volunteer program. This allowed for more citizens to be involved with the library, and it helps in efficient use of staff hours and budget resources. The existing part-time volunteer coordinator was expanded to full-time to provide the necessary staff time for recruiting and coordinating a larger number of volunteers. Some of the volunteer roles are greeting library visitors at the main information desk downtown, helping with kids' events, putting the protective covers on books before they go out on shelves, volunteering in the Maker Hub, and when people place a hold on an item that is on a library shelf, a volunteer goes and gets it from the shelf in order to fulfill that Another volunteer position is with our Storytime-to-Go program. Since some children can't come to us, volunteers take a Storytime program out every week to where these children are, such as home daycare settings. This is a good example of how the increased volunteer support funded by the levy helps the library to extend services. Here's a short video with Storytime-to-Go volunteer Sharon Hawks.
Always bring me up because they're so cute, they're smart. They surprise me all the time. It means a lot to me to be able to make a difference in these kids' lives, reading to them in the Storytime-to-Go program at the Eugene Public Library. It's a really positive experience.
Now, let's talk about more programs for all ages. Every year, the library provides free programs and events and activities that inform, entertain, and inspire adults, teens, and children. The levy promise is to increase those programs by 33% over the life of the levy, with a particular focus on priorities identified by the community, support for young readers and their parents, services for teens, including activities and programs, and maker opportunities, providing access to tools and skill training for individuals or small businesses, including new technologies. Also, there's a priority in expanding the number of library programs that are delivered off-site. In the first year of the levy, the library offered over 1,700 total programs, which was a 25% increase over the previous year. We are already close to the goal of 1,800 programs per year. Attendance at next year's programs was over 500,000. Community members repeatedly share how important it is for the library to help children's literacy development. It begins with developing skills in young children. Research shows early literacy helps kids develop the skills that they need as they grow into learning to read. It covers everything a child needs to know about reading before they're ever learned to read. There are six skills that children need to get ready to read: letter knowledge, sound awareness, vocabulary, print motivation, learning to love books, print awareness, learning how to use books, and narrative skills. The primary library program for this pre-reading skill In addition to expanding Storytime-to-Go, we also added additional Storytimes on-site, an evening Storytime and a STEAM Storytime focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. Preschool programs increased at all three locations, up nearly 10% over last year. The library now offers a total of 14 regular Storytimes each week at our three locations, including one in Spanish, every Saturday at the Bethel branch. The total number of programs for young children was over 950, with attendance of over 29,000. Not all at once, can you imagine? Teen programs also increased at all three locations, a 50% increase over last year. As our community knows, serving young people during this time in their life is critical. We are always moved when teens talk about the important role a library plays in their lives. I know from personal experience how challenging and how important it is to reach this age group. I have a pre-teen grandson, and the library has and continues to play a really important part in his life. He loves to read, and not just the reading. He asked me just the other day about 3D printing, which we also offer. There are many young people like Luke and Malcolm, for whom the library is very special. I mentioned maker earlier. For those who are not familiar, maker refers to what you might describe as traditional do-it-yourself projects, but it also refers to projects that involve high-tech software and equipment. At all three locations, we offer free maker workshops. Plus, library cardholders have access to independent project work in the Maker Hub Open Lab and Media Lab that are on the third floor of the downtown library here. We opened the Maker Hub in the spring of 2016. The Maker Media Lab room offers state-of-the-art audio, video, and design equipment and software. Last year, the Media Lab resources were used nearly 1,500 times. The Open Lab offers ways to develop school skills and use tools. Volunteers operate the Open Labs. Expanding the volunteer program lets us expand the Open Lab hours, and most recently, the hours increased to every afternoon, all afternoon, every day of the week. Last year, the Open Labs vast collection of equipment was used 1,300 times. And here's a brief video to tell you a little more about it.
Making things available like high-end software that would work great for job development or for creating your narrative and stories, working on creative endeavors, digitizing old memories, things that you might not have access to, as well as high-tech tools that you would want to use for creating a new idea that you have or prototyping a business endeavor, something like that. So, 3D printers, a CNC mill, sewing machines, vinyl cutter
Bruce, you're used to that stuff. At this point, it doesn't seem strange, but I know it's exciting for people who haven't heard about it yet, so I'm always glad to share it. I always get oohs and ahs. Delivering library services to other places in the community helps us provide increased and easier access, especially in the neighborhoods where they don't have easy access to a neighborhood branch. During the past year, staff researched and analyzed potential off-site locations and programs. Our aim is to go places where people are already gathered, and to further extend the focus areas for increased programs, young readers, teens, and maker opportunities. The locations we visited included apartment complexes, schools, community centers, and community events, such as Sunday Streets and the Eclipse Viewing Party on Skinner Butte. And the list continues to grow as we find new opportunities. In order to most efficiently offer these off-site programs, we have been leasing a van. All supplies and equipment are stored on the van, saving the costly staff time of loading and unloading. In the next year, a custom van will be purchased, saving money over the long run and further increasing the efficiency. Last year, the library reached over 5,000 people at over 250 off-site events. Now, more materials and technology. Another levy promise includes returning the library's budget for books, movies, eBooks, etc., to pre-recession levels. The library maintains a robust and diverse collection of materials in a variety of formats, and the collection is responsive to community needs. For example, our digital collection of magazines was strong, but we were still receiving many requests related to print magazines. With levy funding, we added new subscriptions and gave library cardholders the ability to check out print magazines for home use. Another example of a collection change was enhancing the video portion of the collection. We are now offering Blu-ray discs, which were a huge hit. The total number of items we have available to the community is over 1 million. That is almost 500,000 physical items and over 600,000 digital items. We kept the levy promise, and the budget is back to the level it was before the recession. As a result, there are 100,000 more items on the shelves, and digitally on the shelves, I suppose, compared with last year. That is an 11% increase in the number of library materials. Though our digital collection is a little bigger, in response to the usage of cardholders, our collection of physical items is still significant and well-used. Those of you who use the hold system have hopefully found that your wait times are shorter, or as you browse the Lucky Day shelves, perhaps you found even more movies to watch or books to read. Again, library materials were borrowed 2 million times last Providing access to technology, and especially the internet, is a key role for the library because so many people would not have access without the library. Increased access to technology for the branches was identified as a community need. In order to provide maximum increase of computer access in the very small branches, we added laptops that you can check out. Library cardholders can borrow a laptop for two days. They can take it home or any location, including places that offer Wi-Fi access. We began loaning laptops in the spring of 2017 with six laptops at each branch. In just the first two months of the program, over 100 people used those laptops. They are particularly appreciated by students of all ages and seniors, who are often also students. And now, we talk about accountability and transparency. To ensure accountability and transparency, the measure specified provisions, including separate levy fund budgeting and accounting, annual staff summary of spending and performance measures, annual review by the Citizen Advisory Board, and what we are doing today, annual report to the City Council. Throughout the year, library staff have been providing updates to the Library Advisory Board, and at their September meeting, the annual summary of spending and performance measures was delivered. In your packets, you'll find a letter from the Chair of the Library Advisory Board, written following the Board's review of the Year One Library Levying Report. Prior to the levy, the library's level of service was supported by $10.6 million per year from the City of Eugene's General Fund, plus grants and donations from the Eugene Public Library Foundation and Friends of the Library. The levy is set at a flat rate of $2.7 million a year for five years. For the first year of levy funds, total revenue was $2,559,486. Total expenses were $1,627,590. For the first year, expenses were intentionally held below revenue. Some of the first-year funds have been reserved as part of budget planning for the full five years. The levy will provide the same amount of revenue every year. However, spending will increase due to continued expansion of services, as well as inflation and other factors. Funds are being budgeted in order to ensure the ability to fulfill levy promises throughout the full five years. The library has created a section of the website where community members can get information about the specific expanded services supported by levy funds. These pages have been updated periodically throughout the year, and we will continue to keep them updated. After today's council presentation, this report will also be added to the website and available for community review. That's all I've got. Thank you. Do you have any questions for myself or Renee?
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Are there any councillors who want to comment or ask questions? Councillor Syrah, go for it. Anybody else?
Thank you for this great presentation. I think the document you created, which will be available to the public, is a really nice one and clearly lays out how we're fulfilling the promise of the levy, so that's great. Much appreciated. I just had a few questions in reference to the increased hours, which is wonderful that we've been able to increase the hours both here and at the branch libraries. Can you remind us, if you remember, how the current hours compare to what we had prior to having make those cuts for the recession?
Prior to the recession?
Yes. I believe we had 56 hours at each branch, and the downtown library is what it was prior to the...
So, we fully restored the downtown library, and we've come close to, but not quite, to restoring what we had at the branches.
That's true. Yes.
We did a careful study to find out when the hours would be most valued to reopen. We did not open the same schedule because we noticed that usage was changing over time, and we wanted to respond to the community's needs.
Great. And then, the off-site program. I had not been aware of the off-site program work, and so, is that new, or has it been around for a while, and you've just been able to expand it? It seems like a great program to get the library out into the community, particularly those parts that don't have access to a branch.
This is a great expansion of what we've done in the past. We've certainly always gone out to schools and community groups to give speeches and talk about the library services, but these are bringing on-the-ground activities to the community in different ways than we really were able to do before.
And can you say that that's because of the support of the levy, that you're able to expand that particular program that way?
Absolutely.
That's great. And then, the increase in materials, an 11% increase in what we've been able to purchase. We lost some ground during the recession, so, you know, we've got some makeup to do if we want to kind of pretend that didn't happen, get back to where we would have been if we'd been able to continue the funding. Is it realistic or an expectation that you'd be able to have an 11% increase in our materials every year of the levy? Or are you guys thinking about that?
This is our...
That's a good question. I don't do collection development myself normally, so I can't actually speak to that, but I can find out more information about where we're planning to go with them.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a significant part of the value that the community has with the library, is our wonderful, robust collection, and thinking about, you know, are we going to be able to sustain this nice rate? Or what should our expectations be around that?
I can say that we have budgeted for increase in the collections throughout the life of the levy. So, you'll see something similar to this. I don't know that it'll be exactly this every year, but that's the intention to...
That's the intention.
Each year.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Great presentation, very good for establishing not only your appropriate use of the levy, but also the relevance of a library in the 21st century. A lot of times, you'll hear people say, "Why do we still need libraries? They're full of books, and that's all old technology." But you've really demonstrated that that's not the case in modern libraries anymore, which leads to my question that I wanted to zero in on, is I'm very interested in how libraries can be and continue to be used by our youth. I'm talking about folks 18 or younger. And you talk a lot about digital technology, but there's also the physical aspects of the library, the collection, the books, and so forth. And I'm interested in your assessment of how relevant and useful is the library's various collections to youth? How is it utilized? Are kids reading books? Or are they primarily relying on the technology? In your assessment, how are we going to continue to be relevant for the next 50 years? What does a library need to look like in 50 years in order to continue to be useful, particularly to the younger generations?
We continue to look at what people are needing in the community and what's going on in the technological advances in the library community around the world, really. Absolutely, people are continuing to use the print collection, as we talked about, the pre-literacy skills. Having that physical book in your hands is crucial to having a child getting used to, how do you open this? Do you open it this way? What are those symbols on the page? What do I do with this? Do I chew on it? No. Babies, you know? And that's okay. And they like getting used to the pictures, the visual aspects of it. So, print absolutely would continue to be a draw. We are expanding our graphic novel collections at all ages, all through the library, even through adult. We are adding all kinds of fun new programs coming soon for the teens. I can't announce them quite yet, I think, but stay tuned for more information, exciting information about what we're doing with teens in the coming year. And that's going to involve all kinds of activities, including maker, including book talks, including having them come and volunteer at the library and learn what it's like to have a job, or a volunteer job at least, learn some responsibility and community involvement. What else can I talk about? We continue to expand our Storytimes to a number of different formats and focuses. So, we talked a little about the ones in Spanish. We talked about the Storytime-to-Go, going out into the community. We've experimented with sensory Storytimes for children who have sensory concerns in their lives. We've experimented with children reading to dogs as a non-threatening way to get to learn to read out loud and to shape out words for the first time. There are exciting things happening in the world of teens and children in the library.
Thank you.
Any other councillors wanting to comment or question? Emily?
Thank you for the report. Libraries are wonderful. Better libraries are better. What do you see as the end of this levy? We've got four more years, which is nothing. And all these wonderful improvements, are they going to be sustainable, or are we going to forever need a levy? And I know a lot of this is budget, and we don't know yet, but it's a lot of money. $37 a year actually makes a difference to people who make $20,000 a year. And I'm just wondering about the sustainability of all this awesomeness. And I'm just wondering about the sustainability of all this awesomeness.
Well, as you stated, the levy is a short-term funding strategy. And so as we get closer to the end of the levy period, we will have to have that conversation with council, the community, and budget committees. It isn't sustainable without the levy. Clearly, we've expanded services through the funding of that. So that is a future conversation we'll need to have.
Any other councillors wanting to comment?
I have a couple comments. I really want to thank you. I love this report and the way it lays out the information. I find it particularly compelling the ways in which you think outside the box. Very exciting. I mean, the Makerspace, when I saw it on my orientation tour, was like, "Whoa, this is really great." And I'm with Claire Syret that this off-site, expansion of off-site, seems like a very, very critical role. And I remember talking to you about those six laptops, and I guess that went smoothly. So I'm wondering, is there a possibility that that would be expanded? That there would be more than six laptops? Or how is that, what do you see happening there?
We will continue to monitor the use. Absolutely, we will consider it, depending on the demand and the possibilities of staff support, of course, for that number of increased laptop technology. We don't have immediate plans, but we're certainly talking in all kinds of different directions for expanding our technology use and access for the public.
Are there... I'm sure there's an answer to this question. So it's just a leading question, so that you can answer it for me, which is the ways in which your services are augmenting what the public schools maybe used to provide or might provide but don't provide? Do you have comments about that?
Ooh, that's a complicated one. You know, we don't want to take over from the public schools in provision of services that we do think the schools really should still be providing. However, they can't, and they don't currently in a lot of cases. So we do our best to supplement what we can to the extent that is practical and reasonable for a public library to take on. We do not stock school books, for example, coursework books. But we do help people learn how to use libraries, how to research. One thing we didn't talk about a whole lot was reference services and the staff that stand at each of the desks to help people find the information or use the computers and technology that we're adding to the collection. That is one of our greatest resources. The caring, loving, talented people who help people every day at the desks.
Thank you for saying that, because that's actually what I was thinking about, is that when my kids came through school, there were no school librarians. They came post-Measure V, and there were no school... So there was no one to teach them how to use the library, except for volunteers. Which, you know, we did our best, but it's not the same. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the report very much. I'm a huge fan and advocate for the library, except for this last. I think I've been to the... And I always get this wrong. The Foundations Library Sale. Did I get that right? The Foundations Library Sale?
Friends of the Library Book Sale?
Friends of the Library. Okay, there we go. Every year for about the last 20. And I'm lucky, I suppose, to have quite a lot of those in my front room. And my children were lucky as a result of that. And in my children's schools, they had every year their own kind of book sale that benefited their schools and added to their library. And a lot of parents donated to that and did that in their schools. But I don't know that that's the case in all schools, certainly. But I wonder, is that... There were, at least in their schools, a number of parents who would participate in the process of some companies. It was a private-public partnership where those publishers would hold book sales in the schools. Parents would both purchase things for their children, but they would also then donate and raise money that would contribute to the school's library and their collections as a result. Is that the sort of thing we might do in our library in order to expand our offerings to young people in our downtown public library and in our branches? Is that a good idea or a bad idea? Or what are the complications, I suppose, of that idea?
I haven't thought about that, not being a collections librarian, as I thought. I can take it back. We can think about it. We have complex methods of looking at what the community wants, what's popular in the world out there. And we have various relationships with different publishers and distributors for getting really very deep discounts for libraries over space and time. That's benefited us greatly.
I appreciate that. One of the reasons I bring that up is because each and every time we have the library levy in the distant past and recently on the ballot, a lot of the arguments and the discussions are about the value of a robust library to the young people in our community. And so a lot of people want to support that. And in the schools, when they do these sorts of things, a lot of people participate because they want to see kids have good access to that. So I wonder why we wouldn't open up to our entire community with our public library the opportunity for everybody in the community to participate in making it more robust in the kids' section specifically.
They do?
Beyond the library in this other kind of way. So I'd be interested in having more of a discussion about that, kind of partnership.
One program that we've talked about that isn't funded through the library, it's funded through our generous support of our Eugene Public Library Foundation, is the Imagination Library, which reaches kids from birth to five, up to five, that are eligible, that live within the City of Eugene. Free book every month sent to their home. And that's something similar, I think, Mike, that you're talking about. And we have that partnership. It's growing. The foundation continues to raise funds and promote that program. We're really appreciative of that. And those are ways that we can extend the services into the community to reach... Really, it's expanding... At the end of the time, the kids will have 60 books in their home collection.
Right. Right.
So we have those. We still have work to do. I know the foundation is at about the most robust, I want to say chapter or city that's participating in this, in the state of Oregon. Well exceeded participation, but there's more to go, and they're continuing to work with that.
I thought I was particularly lucky a couple of years ago when my daughter asked for a bookshelf for Christmas as a gift to keep her books on, because she had so many of them. I thought we must be pretty lucky, I guess, at that. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, great. Great report. Great work. I like the format of the report and how you've laid this out. It's pretty easy to understand. I don't use the library very much, because I seem to just read packets. But I do visit the library a lot. But it seems like we've kept our promise of more hours, more programs, more materials, and modernizing the library services. And do you agree with that?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think the levy, we said what we were going to do, and then we did exactly what we said we were going to do. And I think it shows in all the increases, 10% in circulation increase, and the myriad of numbers of different kinds of programs, and the materials that we've added 11% from last year. And we haven't even spent all the money that was allocated for this first year. And by the way, I think that's a good strategy, not to have all of it spent in the first year to use it up over time. So it is a five-year levy. But it will, as Emily said, go like that.
Any other councillor comments? I think we're... Thank you very much for this report, and thank you to the community volunteers who provided the oversight for this project. Thank you so much. Okay.
Yes. The next topic of discussion today is a return, a follow-up, if you will, from the October 11th work session. And council had requested the city manager bring back a draft ordinance concerning fireworks restrictions. And today, I'm joined at the table by Chief Joe Zaludic, Fire Chief Joe Zaludic, and I'll turn it over to him.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Also with me today are Assistant Fire Marshal Amy Linder and Eugene Police Lieutenant Jen Bills. And they're here as subject matter experts. What we hope to do today is present the draft ordinance. We connected with the city attorney's office, the fire marshal's office, some vendors, and also with code enforcement to try to find the wording that, when we reviewed the tapes, was as close to the wording as we could get. What we're hoping to do today is answer any questions and then receive feedback as this ordinance makes its way towards a public hearing in the future. So with that, I'd like to open it up for either suggestions, if you have it in front of you, and see if there's any questions that we can answer.
Comments? Emily?
Thank you very much. I like the way it was rewritten to be the same for all residences. I think that's much easier. What happens with the selling of fireworks? If we pass this and only some of the fireworks that you can buy now in Oregon can be used in Eugene, do the vendors then only sell our Eugene-approved fireworks? Can they still sell all of the fireworks? How's that going to affect them?
My understanding is that the present configuration of this does not affect the sales of fireworks in any ways. It only speaks to the time that they can be discharged and the sound level at about 50 feet away after they're being discharged.
So is that monitored or put forth by the state? It's not local as to how, where, and which fireworks you sell?
At present, we do not have ordinance language that speaks to which fireworks. That's corrected.
I'm just wondering, it won't be helpful that you can buy all of the fireworks in Eugene for this almost two-week period that doesn't end until the two days after the Fourth of July, but you can't set them off here. And I guess that's just how it has to be, but I see that as sort of a stumbling block. And the sound, I think it's great, but I realize we're not going to stamp each firework with an "okay" in Eugene. I wonder if it would be possible to have a list of all those fireworks they sell? It's not infinite. And which ones pass the sound barrier and which ones don't? So I'm just seeing that as a sort of a stumbling block to having this actually be as effective, sound-wise, as I'd like it to be. That being said, I still want it to pass. I think it's a good compromise. And I'm looking forward to the rest of the discussion.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be very general with my question. And so I'm looking for an answer that's generally yes or generally no. As I read this rule, this new parts of the ordinance, it seems to me that the difference between today and this new ordinance being in force is that there'd be fewer days that you could light legal fireworks and that now whistling "Pete's" are illegal. Generally speaking, that's probably not accurate?
Generally, yes. I feel that's an accurate statement. Yes.
Everything else that gets lit legally now probably is okay, except the stuff that's really loud. And the one that jumps to my mind, as I said, like a piccolo Pete, whistling Pete kind of thing, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I would, I guess, a question for... I'm about to say lieutenant, but I don't know. Captain? Lieutenant? Okay, I wanted to promote you there. Sorry. Lieutenant Bill, in the River Road and Santa Clara area where we have a checkerboard of county and city residences, how do we effectively police this?
We police it the same way we would police it in any other part of the city, where the call for service comes in, it gets put on a list, and then we respond to it in the order that they come in, or if we observe it. So it's the same thing. We'll check on between county and city addresses. And certainly, if it's a county address, then we'll try to go and wave. But city address, then we'll stop and say hello.
Yeah. So I guess that... The issue for me has always, with the issue of Fourth of July, has always been about enforcement. And certainly, I don't want to put off the wrong idea here. I'm not attacking the police department. I think for us to make more stringent ordinance on enforcement of currently legal fireworks just makes the job of enforcement more difficult. And I don't know that we're able to do that well. I don't think we do, not because of the officer's capabilities at all, but because it's a rule that's almost impossible to enforce. I, as near as I understand it, you have to catch someone in the act to cite them. Is that correct? So if almost all responses are complaint-based, is that also correct?
No. So this last year, one of the things we did was we would do self-initiated activity, where officers, if they're driving around and saw something on their way to another destination, would actually stop and deal with the thing they saw immediately and talk to the folks who were lighting the fireworks. Oftentimes, we get compliance. And one of the things we will do is if people give us their fireworks, and so they're relinquishing their property, they don't get cited. That was one thing. And in one case, we were able to get a handful of fireworks. And that, in the long term, benefits us, because it takes away that fire danger and that personal injury danger immediately. So we do some amount of self-initiate activity with the staff we have out. But generally, it is going to be call-response based. So it's called into the comm center, and then we respond as we can.
We currently have a series of dates. This proposed ordinance shortens that. We currently have approved dates for lighting regular, currently legal fireworks. How often do you cite people who light them on days that aren't within the current framework?
I don't have that information. I'd have to look it up. I'd only have an anecdotal answer at this point.
What would you guess to make, generally speaking? Do you write a lot of citations for people that light them outside the timeframe we currently have?
Probably not, no.
Thank you.
Hey, Alan?
Yeah, I like this compromise of quiet fireworks and the shortening of the dates. That makes sense to me. I also like the change going from 60 decibels at the property line to, you can't hear it 50 feet away. That 60 decibels, nobody knows what that means unless you're walking around with a meter. So that's the first thing I thought of when that was proposed to me. But I know if I can hear it, and I'm 50 feet away, and I know how far 50 feet is. So that seems like a reasonable and simple enough and objective enough standard that it's workable. I too have questions about the enforceability of enforcement of this and how we're going to actually do that. What we've done in the past is we've actually beefed up how many people respond to this on the days that are legal. Are we going to do that again? And then the second question is, what about the software?
I'll speak to the software, and I'll defer the enforcement piece to Lieutenant Bills. From a software perspective, we have had contact with the vendor that has confirmed that they are going to make it available in Oregon and Washington this spring. We've also talked with our IT director, and we have a pathway to automating some of the letter generating and processing of those once we have the application in place. And we're confident that in the first year, if we send letters that say this was the activity, and these could be the potential consequences, that by the second year, we're going to have a much lower level of letters that need to be mailed.
Yeah, warning in the first year.
Correct, yes.
And fines in the second year. How does the app actually work? Do you take a picture, and it has the GPS and the date on it, or a video?
Yeah, that's correct.
Through the app?
Presently, there's not video capability to reduce some of the digital footprint that it would take with a lot of video. But it does have a picture and an audio file that can be attached to it. And then that goes forward with the commentary, and then it's able to be processed from there. Historically, the communities that use this the most successfully, they use it as an administrative tool through code enforcement, unless there is a large gathering or law enforcement chooses to use it as a tool to document GPS location and activity. And then they would be the witnesses for any municipal, municipal court-type follow-up.
So I haven't seen the app. So does the app say what's the address that you're... So we know where to send the letter?
Correct. And it gives you a GPS printout. Usually, they recommend that you have something that confirms the address within the picture, if possible.
So what about people that are doing it not at an address? Say, in open space or someplace, a parking lot?
Yeah, a little more difficult to follow up on. That's a very good point.
And enforcement next year?
Sure. So I'll tell you what we did this last year.
He's sitting here for a while. It's going to get better.
So last year, we staffed this. It was, of course, you recall, it was Tuesday, was the Fourth of July. And we were most concerned about the weekend leading up to the event. It turned out that our concerns weren't founded. But what we did was we had a bomb sergeant who ran the overall operation and four bomb technicians. And the reason for them is their ability to actually seize the legal fireworks and then dispose of them properly. Just saves a big step. And sometimes people create their own devices, which then it's nice to have your bomb team out there.
And then we had four patrol officers that we put into two-person cars. The reason for that is all these calls are two-people calls, because you're usually driving into a pretty big party or gathering, and so by having two people in a car together, you can respond to it appropriately. So for us, that was a total at one point of 10 people out in some form or fashion between July 1st and July 4th. In terms of call-response, the highest day was, of course, July 4th, where we had 77 calls for service and about five self-initiated calls, and that's because they're driving so much. July 3rd, however, was the second highest at 25 calls for service and 15 observed separate incidents. There were no citations, but we did, had a pretty good seizure of fireworks. And the other thing for us is that our enforcement is only as effective as our prevention efforts. And so our amnesty day that we do, and this was the third year we've done it, has been a success, and every year, we've just increased the amount of fireworks we've been able to seize. First year, I think we seized 50 pounds. This year, it was well over 100 pounds of fireworks that people voluntarily gave up, which is a great thing. And that's something that we're, those are efforts that we will continue doing. We'll continue staffing the fourth, and if the fourth falls on a Saturday, we'll definitely be staff, heavily staffing the day prior as well, so.
Voluntarily give up? How did they, so people just drop these things off?
Yeah, so it's second-in-chambers.
Is there illegal?
Yes, yes, or, you know.
Or like parents drop this off because their kids bought something?
It's a don't ask, don't tell policy. They don't care whose they are, drop them off. Yeah, we staff that with our bomb technicians and our crime prevention specialists, and so anyone, no questions asked, can drop their fireworks off, and we'll take them happily.
I'm glad I could make your time looking up those stats worth your while and not a waste of time, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Having all that. Are we going to do the software? Is there, are you going to do that administratively, or is there something the council needs to do to do that?
There will be a follow-up, I believe, that confirms that we're going to use that application in another meeting, and so I'm, my understanding is we're proceeding forward with that under the city manager's direction, and we'll report out to that as soon as we have the GIS layer for the law enforcement jurisdictions provided to that vendor, so they can then provide us with the program, and, but that is in process right now.
Okay. It doesn't seem to require council approval.
No, it's just, we'll give you an update as we make more progress.
The piece of that, that actually, Section 2 of the, of both the original attachment and your replacement attachment A, speaks to being able to, in lieu of doing kind of the standard enforcement, this allows for the administrative civil penalty, so the component that would have allowed, would have needed some council action is embedded in this ordinance. So it provides an either-or and an and, actually. So it allows for our typical Chapter 4 law enforcement enforcement, as well as as an alternative or in addition to an administrative civil penalty. So if you end up ultimately adopting this ordinance, then that's, you've taken the action you need to take.
So that's the subsection 8, Section 4.99, Section 8. The last question I had was working with vendors. So I was thinking about this, and there is a patchwork of people that live outside the city and inside the city, especially in the River Road area. So I'm wondering if through administrative rules, we can work with vendors to have maybe a requirement at the point of sale that says this does meet the Eugene code as a quiet firework and, on the point-of-sale display or something like that, so that we could, so people could make sure that they're buying the right fireworks and not get in trouble because they didn't know what was okay and what wasn't. Because we're not going to wander around and do that for everybody, but we only have a discrete number of vendors, and that seems like the point of sale, it seems like the point to regulate this and enforce, get a lot of enforcement for very low effort, especially if we get cooperation from the vendors.
Yes, and our Fire Marshal's Office did some follow-up with the vendors. I was going to see if Assistant Fire Marshal Linder could speak to some of the vendor timing and availability, and, but we, she did a kind of a deep-dive research on how we might be able to pursue this.
Sure, so part of the challenge is, is that we would have to establish that list. There's, there's no current, you can't pick up a firework now and know, there's no decibel rating on it, there's no qualification of sound, so there's no, there's no way to filter the product out there by a specific criteria that you can look at the package and know what that means. So that's, the first challenge would be identifying what that product list looks like. And then there are varying levels of product ordering and supply dates. So remember, at the last work session, the retailer, the local, the local guy on the street, the nonprofit making money, when they place their order is very different as that goes up the chain. So the local retailers are just now making their, their orders for their Fourth of July stuff. However, the wholesalers that they order from have already made their orders from their importers and their manufacturers. So this year's product is already been ordered at the wholesale level. And then the challenge then becomes is those wholesalers and manufacturers already have to filter their product based on what is legal in the state of Oregon, different than what they distribute to other places in the country. So then taking that subset of product that they have that's Oregon legal and figuring out how to filter that to what is Eugene legal becomes an extra challenge for them, especially when we're talking about assortment packs and the various products that are in those, and they don't have the ability to break up those packs. So then that makes things, then individual product sales, and then, again, then their determination is, is that they're not going to typically manufacture something special for a community. So it would then be figuring out a way to label those individual products, and then the sales aspect is completely different than the use aspect.
I was thinking of the variety packs too, but if you had a display that said, you know, had a picture of piccolo peat and said, "This is not legal in Eugene anymore," then people would know when they buy that pack that that one's, you can't use it in the city of Eugene. That would be, and if you guys need volunteers for the team that's going to buy all the fireworks and test them, I think I might be available.
Me too, me too. You're out of time, that's me.
Actually posed that.
I was, I was, record, I was first.
But you were, the red light had gone on, and nobody paid any attention.
Chris, you're on.
Thank you. Actually, Alan asked exactly the same question I was going to ask. I'm coming under the notion of no surprises, and what I don't want to do is walk in my Fred Meyer, buy a pack of fireworks, and suddenly realize some of these I can't fire off, and I didn't know that. So I would reiterate, we need to have some sort of a notification at points of sale, including major retailers, Walmart, Fred Meyer, places like that, and it's, we're just talking about a paper notice that says, "New Eugene ordinance that says you cannot fire, you cannot use fireworks that make a noise larger than 50 feet." You could have some pictures of some, perhaps. We could test what we can, and I'd try to move full speed ahead with that. But I think people need to be made aware that some of the fireworks they think are perfectly legal because they're in a pack that I bought at my local Walmart are indeed not, no longer legal. I think we need to make that notice. People need to know so that they can't say, "Well, gee, you know, what are you doing to me? You're surprising me." So it's no surprises, which gets to another point around the complexity of this. I talk a lot about being clear and being certain, and I think if we start to roll this out in a kind of a confusing way, well, what's legal, what's not legal? Where can I buy it? Where can I not buy it? How does it work? How does it not work? I think it's going to, it's going to encourage people to not know what to do, and even if by accident violating, you know, this new ordinance. So I think we need to try to keep things as simple as possible. I think that this ordinance has really moved in that direction quite a bit by not trying to create decibel levels and all kinds of other, you know, things people don't understand. Say, if you can hear it 50 feet away, it's not, it's not legal in Eugene anymore, and try to keep this as we roll it out. But we need to roll this out as much as possible. We need to let as many people know as soon as we can that this is now in place and that what you thought has been legal all of a sudden until now is no longer, and try to, and try to do as much as we can. And then the certainty piece of it is, gee, I made a mistake, you know, can I get away just this once? We need, there needs to be certainty that if, if there's a law, you know about it and you violate it, there's a certain consequence. It's something, you know, this is a broken record for me. People don't follow the rules because they think they can get away with it. And so we need to be able to demonstrate the certainty that, whether it's through an app or through some sort of other application or whatever, is that we create a rule, we let you know about it, and so now if you choose to violate a rule that you know about, there is a certain consequence that will occur, and that's an enormous challenge because it takes resources to do that. But I am happy, as I said before, to talk at the Budget Committee about what resources we need to do to ensure more certainty around the number of different types of things, this being only one of them.
Betty?
Okay. I hope no dogs are putting off fireworks downtown. I wonder about the 50-foot, how, why 50 feet? That doesn't protect your next-door neighbor. Does anyone know why it's 50 feet, why you're allowed to have a sound go as far as 50 feet or anywhere under?
The 50 feet is, is a measure that is used in other portions of our noise ordinances. I know our building permit services, if they want to speak to this, but that 50 feet, you can see it in other places in the code because it is about the distance from, you know, someone's backyard to another person's backyard. It's things like that. It is a common, it's one of the common measurements for other.
It's not 30, I thought it was 30 feet.
I think it's 50.
50.
And we can get you that information if they don't have it readily, but that was, that exists currently within, 50 feet exists currently within some of the nuisance code noise ordinances, so that's why that number was used.
Well, the people next door are okay if you make noise on both sides of you, I guess. Then I had a question, I'm just, as a comment, I guess, I had a question. If you get a complaint and you go, and they say, "No, we weren't doing it," what happens? And they're not doing, they're no longer doing it when you go there.
Too bad.
In the police department? I'm sorry.
No, police department.
Well, often we'll try to talk to them a little bit more and get more information and see, and do a small investigation to see who was lighting them off and what was going on, but oftentimes, we just advise them to not do it again, and then we leave.
So it won't really be much different from now, except for the restriction of the number of days, right?
Correct.
Yeah, this ordinance won't really make much difference. I don't think. I, I guess that's all I have to say, except I hope we don't have to have a huge fire before we actually have a ban. I think that would be, seems like that's what it would take, and I hope that doesn't have to happen. We did have a house burned down a couple of years ago for fireworks. People have been asking me, "Is there any hope?" After they heard that we didn't do the ban, I said, "Is there any hope for next year?" And I said, "I don't think so, not unless they could change the minds of a couple of counselors." Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you for the draft ordinance. I think it captures what the council was asking for. I appreciate hearing more about the amnesty turn-in event. I think that's a positive, proactive way to try to mitigate some of the problem. And just out of curiosity, going back to Councilor Simples' comments, could we have taken the approach of prohibiting the sale of certain fireworks in the city? Would that have been another way we might have come at this issue?
I did not look at that. And I didn't look at what mechanism it would take because we already had the fireworks restrictions, so we looked at modifying that. So we, I think you would run into some of the similar practical issues that.
Right, I'm just asking from a legal standpoint.
I did not look specifically at that. We don't have, we don't offer business permits, and we don't specifically permit through our code, sales of fireworks. There's a fire marshal's permit that is given, but that's more about regulating. So it's, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. We didn't ask you to look at it, so. So I just want to, one of the pieces of information we wanted for this work session was some more context about what the impact of these changes would have on the permitted commercial displays. And right now, we don't have provision for any of those to occur on New Year's Eve. So I don't know if you have any further information about commercial, you know, what's typically been the history of those, of issuing those permits and who wants them and how much this is going to curtail those opportunities.
Can you speak to that?
Sure. So in terms of a fire code permit, we permit them under two sections of the code, but from a state level, they're all issued a public display permit. And so when we talk about a public display, we're not only talking about the aerial outdoor displays that you see, but we also regulate the public display of close-proximate fireworks, such as your things at concerts. The one on my desk right now is for the Trans-Siberian Orchestra in Matthew Night Arena. There's a few at the Holt Center. So we probably have 10 to 12 a year of public displays, and that's a combination of our outside, larger conventional displays and our inside close-proximate displays, and they happen throughout the year.
So would this affect the indoor close-proximate displays, this draft ordinance?
By definition, public display encompasses both of, both of those.
I don't think that was our intention. I think we are trying to get at what happens in a neighborhood and the impact at that level.
Well, I can tell you that right, so right now, the way this code is currently written, technically, if you were to use that interpretation, then they would only be allowed June 20 through, through July 6, and it is absolutely not applied that way. I mean, the, the close-proximate displays in Matthew Night Arena aren't prohibited except for other than June 23rd to July 6. So similarly, limiting it to July 3rd to July 5th, we would apply it like we do with the M's type stadium, public outdoor, because that's the way these firework restrictions, code provisions are applied. They're not being applied to the inside Matthew Night Arena to prohibit them outside of the June 23rd to July 6, if that makes sense. So can you speak to the number of outside, like, big M's displays that occur other than through July 4th, through the July?
The rodeo?
The rodeo's outside of our jurisdiction, so that's in the county, so won't have any impact on that. The date restriction currently is for consumer product, not for displays.
It's not. No, this, right now, this, this applies to all, it's written to apply to all.
Okay.
In the draft or in the current language?
In the current.
So there's typically, in the city of Eugene, there's typically the one at Alton Baker Park, typically the M's, and occasionally, a concussion display for the Eugene Symphony when they're at the Cuthbert. So those are the most common. There's occasional outliers. There's typically a, like, Pac-12 championship was outdoor at Otzen, was a combination of close-proximate and a little conventional product, so it was a little bit of a hybrid, but that's an occasional, special, big event kind of thing. But the three typical ones we see every year are the M's, the 20-30 Club, and the Eugene Symphony at the Cuthbert.
And on what dates do those typically occur? That's, I'm trying to figure out what we're restricting by limiting it to these specific dates.
20-30 Club is always on the 4th itself. The M's is whatever their closest home game is. It could be within a week of that, and the, the symphony one is in the fall usually, and occasionally in the spring. It's not in the summer, and it's not a Fourth of July type show.
And do we, have we traditionally had anyone with a permit display on New Year's Eve outdoor?
No.
No, that has not been an issue?
First night downtown?
Ages ago when we did first night, there were.
In the last six years?
Not in the time I've been reviewing the permits.
So right now, if we pass this draft as, as written, that, what I'm hearing is the M's display on their home game would not be permitted.
Depending on when it fell.
If it doesn't fall on the, between the 3rd and the 5th.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So we know what we're, what we're talking about. I don't have a big problem with that, so I'm not going to propose a change, but I just want to make sure we're clear about that. Thank you.
And one thing also I could, if, the next thing that would happen, obviously, is if you choose and you want this to go to a public hearing, we would hope that during that public hearing, you'd actually get some more information about that piece. That may, that would be a good opportunity.
Yep.
Jennifer?
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks, those are some great questions. I'm glad you brought that up. Okay, so the 50-feet thing is our, so I'm going to make sure I understand this. I'm not real good with spatial stuff. So the intention is that if my neighbor puts a firework, So the intention is that if my neighbor puts a firework out in their driveway or street, whatever, and lights it, I should not be able to hear it at my house in my driveway.
Oh, Rachael, do you want to speak to the 50 feet? Do you have any information about that? I haven't gone out and done any.
I guess I'm more in the intention rather than the actual, you don't know how far I am from my neighbor, but that's kind of the intention.
I mean, generally, if you're inside your home and they're outside and they're lighting it off, you shouldn't be able to hear it plainly audible in your.
What if I'm in my front yard?
It's going to be.
That's the same distance. So basically, if I'm in my front yard and they're in your, their front yard, I shouldn't be able to hear their fireworks. Because I'm wondering if there's any fireworks that fit into that, like sparklers.
There are some silent, I actually was Googling silent fireworks to see what would come up. And it's interesting when you go, if you go and shop at some, at some of the tents and they'll rate the sounds, one through, and, you know, sometimes those ratings aren't terribly consistent. You could buy a one star and it's still, you'd be able to hear it in your driveway. But there are silent sprays of sparks. So it's, and then the glow worms, there are some that make no sound at all. But there are also some that spray the sparks that don't have an added whistle, screech, or scream. And those are, I think, are the ones that the intent of the council was to get at, is the added audible effect. That's not just coming up from the sparks.
So it's okay if I can hear the sparks exploding, but if there's a whistle, then, then it's not okay.
So, right, and so that's the way we tried to capture it, was like the bangs, whistles, and screeches, which tend to be added audible effects.
Audible addition. I'm totally on board with making the number of days less. I think that's completely reasonable. I'm a little concerned that I think that this could become very frustrating for a consumer, and I don't like setting it up for a situation for you, it's almost like you're set up to fail because you're going to get there. And I'm just not confident we're going to have these lists or these ratings ready. And you're standing there and you're trying to be a responsible consumer and you really have no idea, like, is this one going to be okay? Is this one not going to be okay? I'm just, and I think that just, just makes people very unhappy when they're really trying to follow the rules, but it's almost impossible to do so. I mean, you're just guessing at a certain point. I don't know. That just really bothers me. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a few councilors wanting a second round, Mike and then Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to all of you for a couple of things. Number one, for the preparation of all of this and all the work you put into it. Number two, for keeping us safe during the time that we typically celebrate all these things. And number three, I want to say thank you to Chief for the, trying to incorporate the app that I've been hammering on for about three years now. So that's, that's awesome to see us moving down that road. I have a weird question for the city attorney. In the realm of litigation, and we have nude dancing in Oregon because it's free speech, right? I mean, it got sued, it's expression, it's free speech, right? Okay. I'm wondering if you're aware of any litigation in Oregon in the same way, or otherwise in other states, where the celebration of the 4th of July is an issue of speech?
Well, I actually, I did look into that.
Awesome. What'd you find?
Well, so there's a couple of things. I know that there are, there is no case law out there that says it's an expression of speech, that I was able to find at all. There is, there are three states that prohibit them outright, no fireworks at all. There are three other states that limit them to these types of, to have quiet fireworks, basically sparklers or the little glow worms. So that's, there's six states total that take, put more of a restriction than Oregon has, based on the legality of the fireworks. When it comes to the case law, I wasn't able to find anything that protected the detonation of fireworks as free speech or any similar arguments I've heard about, Second Amendment. So there's nothing out there. There's one case in Oregon that it was not about fireworks, but it used, it was another issue, but it used the example of being able to limit fireworks as, you know, reasonable regulation. So it was dicta, but the example was regulating fireworks. So that's.
Are there states that have freer, more liberal, free-speech laws than Oregon?
I don't know the answer to that.
Bet she does. I don't know that there are, based on what I understand. Ours is about the most there is. I guess I will say, again, I appreciate all your work and my next comments aren't comments on your work at all. I think this ordinance is silly. I think that most people, when they speak to us, will think it's silly. I think it nibbles around the edges of a problem we have with enforcing the stuff we don't like already and it's already illegal, and we're not spending our time trying to actually fix and give our staff the capacity to enforce the problem we already have. This doesn't fix that, and I think it's silly for us to do it. Thank you.
Okay, Emily?
Thank you very much. It would be so helpful to have a list of which ones are acceptable and not with the 50-foot rule. I know that there's only so many fireworks that are orderable and so many that will be coming to Oregon. It doesn't seem beyond the realm of possibility to line them all up and take pictures of the ones that are okay and put a list everywhere they're sold, put it in the newspaper. I think that there's, there's two things in the ordinance. One is about the type of firework, which I still would like to have only fountains and sparklers. But the other change really is the time that we're allowed to use them. So I would, I do think that limiting it to the 3rd and the 4th will make a difference. I don't think that's silly, even if it is for all the fireworks that we can buy right now. And if you light them off in Eugene, not on the 3rd or the 4th, you can't do that. Or you can, but we'll be mad at you. The other question is about the commercial ones. I had wanted it to be just on the 4th, which is when the 2030 Club does theirs, but it was brought up that some organizations would be unfairly punished if it was only on the 4th. The only one that was mentioned was the M's. And city manager asked if he could come back with some information for us regarding who would be negatively impacted if it was only on the 4th. So is there any information about that? Because if the M's aren't playing in town, the 3rd, 4th, or 5th, they're out of luck on this, this ordinance. But also, last time when I asked about New Year's Eve not being listed here, I said, Kim, well, they could get a permit, and the answer was yes. So you need to have some kind of permit to do a commercial display anyway. So I would like to reserve the option to have fireworks on New Year's Eve, you know, if someone asks. I think that's a perfectly reasonable time to have fireworks, and I liked it back when we had first night. So I'm just wondering, you know, how does this, can you get a permit for any time? How much does this 3, 4, 5 thing really affect anybody?
I mean, you can always add in, use light detonator display, any display fireworks anywhere in the city at any time except July 3rd through July 5th, unless otherwise permitted by, I mean, we have that language in other code provisions. I mean, you could add an unless otherwise explicitly granted permission through X, Y, and Z. So if that's something, if you want an escape clause in there that would have it not be so restrictive, we certainly couldn't do that.
I would like the escape clause because personally, I adore fireworks. But I, but back to, if there's an escape clause, then why don't we just make it the 4th? Because who knows when the M's are going to play and they could ask for a permit. So, but we have two things going on. We have the personal fireworks and we have the commercial fireworks, both of which I've heard complaints about. So I'd really like there to be just some way to have Alan and I, you know, test out these fireworks for loudness. And Mike, we can all do it. And, and then the dates for the commercial ones.
Understood. And we may be able to arrange for a demonstration of product. That's something that might be feasible going into next spring. And I understand the interest of communicating at the point of sale. I think what I'm hearing from my law enforcement partners is that the enforcement piece is going to be difficult to, or, you know, it's going to be after the fact for the most part. But we understand, I do, what you're trying to get to with this process. And we can look towards the vendors to see what we can do to have a demonstration of product before we make the labeling.
Great, thank you. Claire?
Thank you. So just a couple of comments relating to what others have said. In relation to Jennifer's questions about the impacts in your driveway versus another home's driveway, for me, the hope was, and understanding all the challenges around enforcement, that this would create a situation where one could be inside their own home and not be negatively impacted by the celebrating of others outside on the street. So that's kind of my context as I think about this, not whether I'm standing out in my yard, whether I'm in my living room trying to watch a movie and I can't because all I can hear is things blowing up and not from the sound effects of the film I'm watching. And then if in fact, and as the city attorney was pointing out, that sometimes the, most often, the loud noise is created by additional features that are, I think likely advertised on the products themselves, because that's exciting. You know, that could be a way to do education around those specific features that might then create, mean that this firework cannot be lit in the city of Eugene. So, you know, that could be another way to discern, rather than a big setting off of fireworks over a second-in-chambers as we test these all out. And I would support adding, the granting of an exemption for permitted displays on dates other than the ones that we are trying to limit, the loud, in-neighborhood use of personal fireworks.
Okay, Alan, another comment?
So the way this ordinance is constructed, subsections 1 and 2 relate to consumer fireworks, and subsection 3 relates to more or less big commercial displays, is that?
Correct. So.
And so what are the definitions of consumer fireworks and display fireworks?
So.
Or S. 480111.
The, so I took a look at those. It was interesting. So the, previously, your, your code provision had no distinction, it just said fireworks. And it reference, and it cross-referenced that administrative rule. So when I went there, it covers everything. It covers consumer, it covers display, it covers everything. And so, and based on your discussion, to break it down to have one section cover consumer fireworks, those are, I was hoping, there would be some sound pieces to it. But the definition of consumer fireworks, if you look, they, it covers like cone fountains, ground fountains, and they say with or without whistling or noise. So our definition of consumer fireworks didn't provide us that noise distinction I was actually hoping to find in statute. So, but the consumer fireworks in ours, in state statute, is all the ones that are currently legal in Oregon. So we took that subset and then said, "Okay, but they can't have that audible bang, whistle, or screech." And then the display fireworks are the ones that are actually going up in the air and blowing up, and those are the statutory, that's that statutory definition.
And currently, anything that goes more than a foot off the ground is illegal anyway?
It's, well, so, right, it can't actually elevate at all if you, if you look at it. And the statute's not written to say what they can't do, it's only written to say what you can do. Actually, what was more interesting to me is when I was researching what all the other states in the U.S. do to see what other states allow. And those things are flying up and bottle-riding. There's, there's just, there's so many other things that are never, that are allowed in other states that aren't even mentioned under consumer fireworks in Oregon because it really is fountains, sparks, and, you know, things that twirl around. They have the ground twirlers and things like that. And those are all referenced, and sparklers.
Right, so bottle rockets are already.
They're already done, yeah. All that is.
Create a little bit more enforcement around that. But, and, and what this really gets at is anything like a Piccolo Pete or something like that, that has a bang or a whistle or a screech. Bangs already. And we can figure that out. And as far as the 50-foot, you know, we have to have some kind of objective standard here. And whether it be 3 feet, or 25 feet, or 50 feet, or 100 feet, I think 50 feet is probably pretty reasonable. That would get at what Claire was trying to get at, which is my thought as well, which is if I'm sitting inside and someone's out there on the sidewalk or at the end of their driveway, I shouldn't be able to hear it. And that's kind of the intent here. And then finally, I agree with Emily, there's, there isn't an infinite number of fireworks. There are a certain number of fireworks. And we should be able to say, "These are not okay and these are." And that should be pretty clear. And whether or not they come in a package, prepackaged from the, from the manufacturer, you should be able to say, "That one in there, can't use that one." And people should know that when they buy it, so there's no surprises. So, and then, so I would, I would like to move this actually along. So if we were to add to subsection 3 at the end, Adam, what do we, what language would we use unless otherwise?
You could add something, unless otherwise permitted by the city manager or designee. So if you wanted to move this ahead to a public hearing, you can move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on the replacement attachment A with the addition of subsection 3 to unless otherwise permitted by the city manager or designee.
So I assume move that.
Second.
Okay. Emily has a comment?
I'm just wondering if we still want to keep it July 3rd through 5th if we're going to have the permitting process for other days of the year, since we're trying to restrict the amount of noise and we've already, it's already saying, "Okay, only on the 3rd and the 4th," then why are the even louder ones also get the 5th? So I'm a little confused as to why we'd want to have two days for personal, but three days for display when the only guaranteed display one is the 2030 Club. I don't know what other people are thinking, but my original thought was the 4th. And if we're adding optional permitting time, do we still need the 3rd and the 5th on there? And would it seem equally fair if the commercials weren't bigger than the private?
I think you just wouldn't have the votes for the 4th.
Do you think it would make that big of a difference to have it? And I guess if it doesn't, what do I care? But you think really there'd be that many more votes to have?
Well, if you restricted it to just the 4th, I don't think you'd get the number of requisite votes, probably. You could test it.
You can move to.
Substituting to change it.
Right. Move to amend the motion to change subsection 3 to be limited to July 4.
Realizing it would fail, I'd still like to do that.
So you can.
Could I move to amend that it's only the 4th for a commercial?
Is there a second?
Just a chance, Betty.
To the 4th, just the 4th, did you?
For the commercial ones, that it would just be for the 4th, not the 3rd through the 5th.
That's better. I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Discussion on this proposed change. Claire?
So just a question around, if we're in section 3 creating an exemption for permitted displays at the city manager's discretion, does section 3 really only apply to commercial permitted displays?
Well, I, we can, it sounds like the fire marshal's office may be looking at this.
So I think you guys need to get together in conference after this.
Yeah, I can tell you that, I mean, this applies to, right now, this entire thing applies to consumer and commercial, period. And it sounds like it's never been enforced to the extent that, like the inside Matthew Night Arena.
Right.
So if we say, "Use light detonator display, any display fireworks anywhere in the city at any time except," and then we.
July 4.
July 4, unless otherwise permitted by the city manager or designee. Permitted, perhaps we want to use the word. Permitted, perhaps we want to use the word authorized, because permitted denotes an actual physical permit.
Right.
But it's actually an authorization that we're all talking about here, unless otherwise authorized. But that would apply, we're talking about outside, big displays. And if the, if there needs to be some clarification based on, because the definition is cross-referenced, and when I went and looked at that definition, this was applying to big outside displays. If for some reason it scoops into something else, we can address that when this comes to public hearing. Because as I hear what y'all want, it is, we're talking about the public displays outside.
Like, what I'm driving at, and I appreciate the clarification, and obviously, we want, you know, our city attorney and our code enforcers and our...
To be honest, firemen.
Folks to all be on the same page, so hopefully that will happen. But it almost seems like section three is, is maybe irrelevant if it's falling, it's getting captured up under number one, and we're creating an opportunity for the city manager to authorize a permit.
We still need the distinction, because consumer fireworks are being treated differently than display fireworks, under your proposed.
Okay, okay.
No whistle speeches are banned.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mike, you had a comment?
In the, once we get back to the...
When you get back to the other one, okay. Okay, so, so what's on the table is a motion to change that's restricting it to July 4th. So, all in favor? One, two, three, opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that goes down. So now we're back to the original motion, and Mike...
Mayor, we need a motion to extend.
Oh, sorry, we do.
I moved to extend 10 minutes.
Cut, second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, opposed. One...
A meeting.
You got a meeting. There you go. All right, we'll extend and hopefully get through. Okay, so Mike, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I'm going to vote no on this. And I'm going to vote no, because this ordinance is absolutely silly. We're going to hear that from the public, and it doesn't do a thing to fix the problem, which is to stop people from lighting things that blow up and fly through the sky. And we're not doing anything to help those whose job it is to enforce, to enforce that stuff better. And that's where we should be spending our time. Thank you.
Okay, Patty?
I could partly agree with Mike, but what it's good for is limiting the number of days, that part. The other part, I don't think will do anything.
We're setting that.
Any other comments, discussion? Greg?
I'm going to go back to, I think, where we were before, and I think that, you know, either we ban them or we don't. And that's my position. So I'm, I'm going to be supporting Mike on this for different reasons.
Okay, all right. Are we now ready for a vote? All in favor of this ordinance with the included phrase...
And if it's okay with the maker and the second, it would be unless otherwise authorized by the city manager or designee.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? One, two.
I think you missed Patty.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, you were in favor. Six. Okay, sorry, I thought I was missing one. Six, thank you. Six in favor, two opposed, so it passes.
So a public hearing.
And so it will go to a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. That's it, thank you very much.